Alright. How's everybody?
Good.
There's a call for our special being of the worst like man at six oh five on Monday, 2:07. I guess we should stand up.
I thought you were just...
It is one month.
Now it's eight months. And two years. Which is yes. One nation. Yeah. Because the three just grow.
Okay. Six feet four or six foot? Yes, yes.
Make sure you're speaking into your microphone so everybody can hear you.
They're gonna have to just use my mask?
Just sort of take out that's all. That we could take.
I understand. But I think you guys are like a floor of moments. I'm a little scared.
Wow.
Alright. You're gonna have to give one second to do something. I have to get to the agenda.
What is the first thing on the agenda?
What do you mean? Elaine, would you like to say anything? You're the only person with a bubble.
Oh, Amanda doesn't count as bubble?
She's right.
She's in the district of...
No, I'm happy to see that you guys are testing the waters here because the Zoom thing is driving everyone nuts. This is good.
Alright, Amanda?
Thank you Elaine for volunteering your time. David?
additions to the agenda.
Sure.
additions and additions.
I would like to add four additions. Cool? Full usage of the meeting room?
You cannot do that unless it's one of me.
Especially.
Well, then how do we have a lead additions and additions to the agenda?
Well, because I made up the agenda at the last minute and didn't go through our...
Listen, that's my fault.
Administatives. That's why I was gonna add it because they saw the additions and we should still... Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. That's my fault. Thanks.
Okay.
New business, discussing following Losip funding for transfer station paving and RFP discussion.
Okay, I'll make this very simple. So we brought three contractors, paving contractors, to the transfer station to get an idea of what it's gonna cost us to repaint. All three contractors basically said there's no way. What's there for pavement isn't salvageable. In all three cases, they said what you need to do is you need to either tear that out or grind that up, so you need to start over. Given that, we got two estimates back, both estimates were basically $60,000 to do the project, of which about $30,000 is the cost for asphalt. So it's a fairly expensive project. We don't really have money budgeted for it. We do have Losip funds that we can use for that if we so choose.
What's the other thirty breakdowns? How many days of labor?
It breaks down to, so I didn't get a... We haven't gone to RFP on this, so I don't have a full breakdown, but I sat down with Pat, so we went through the numbers. Roughly 5,000 of that is the cost to bring somebody in with a road until or to peel the existing pavement up and haul it off to get disposed of. Since there's about a day and a half's labor he thinks in grading it properly to drain. That's presuming Public Works puts in a double basin ahead of time before they get there.
Do we have Public Works just to peel it up with the... I'm just saying, if it's five grand, we've got disposal right behind, can't we?
No. I mean, when we peel it up, we put it in the truck and take it to wind up materials and pay them to get rid of it.
You pay them to take our recycled asphalt and some of that to this asphalt?
Pretty much, yeah.
Already done. I just thought if you're allowed, at least pick up.
I mean, we could if you want to pursue that option. I don't, I mean, they certainly peel up all the asphalt that's been removed so far. You know, they peel up and recycle it if they can. It just, to me, the time and effort peeling it up versus the time and effort of just grinding it up and adding a great to the material. It's about a wash, I think.
Okay. I just thought I'd take it five grand versus 116,000 for days labor for Public Works.
Yeah, I do know it's a wash. Well, because... So one of the contractors gave me a cost assuming it was gonna be ground up. And the other one gave me a cost assuming that they were going to peel it out and get rid of it. And the costs were basically identical. And that contractor told me if I preferred to grind it up, you know, the cost would be roughly the same. With them grinding it up versus them peeling it up and moving it.
Is there any advantage to that? You mean, given that they have to regrade anyways?
To grinding it up, you just end up with, you know, a tiny little bit more material.
Okay. So we'd still be ordering the same tonnage?
Yes, we're gonna end up putting down the same tonnage either way.
So what, they wet the material and roll it? The ground stuff, they would wet the grind stuff, or they're adding it to the hot asphalt?
No, no, they would just be grinding into the existing subbase and using that as part of the subbase.
Okay.
Now, same thing when you recycle or reclaim road. You just basically grind up the first five to eight inches and that the asphalt gets mixed into that first layer and recompacted.
Is there any way to sell asphalt or are they just not paying?
Well, reclaimed asphalt, actually, we'd get off of six dollars a stone. They take it back basically at 200 bucks a truckload. Because ground, if it's not ground, there's no value to it. That's the issue.
Right. I mean, honestly, the base, the paving base that gets used by most contractors is in large part recycled asphalt, just ground a lot finer than...
It's a risk. Yeah. You see it more in, you see it more in driveway bases. Because the state bases are three quarters smaller than mine, so it's a little different. But yeah, you do get somewhere cycle, at least in some of the bases, but the finished coat for state bases is three quarters, so. I don't know, I just think like a lot of money is five grand, but I mean, that's not, that's only a little bit. There's still 25,000 there, so. Just trying to piece what that is. A day and a half of labor for the...
That's...
Are our guys good enough to do the, to do the... The grading?
No.
Okay. That answers one question.
Nor do they really have a grader. I mean, we would have to borrow a grader.
If you don't need a, if you don't need a real grader to do that, they're probably gonna tool a small dozer. Yeah. They may not even bother, they may actually just use a mini school spear. You have a good guy that trains at the ladies' power, actually, it's actually not that one, right? So if we use Losip funds, how much do we need to take out Losip to do this?
65.
So it depends what you, if you want to pay for the whole thing out Losip. I would ask for 65, assume we're gonna do it for less than that. And then just return the rest of the money to the Losip fund.
How much do we have sitting on Losip right now?
Roughly 140,000.
What other projects that would be a concern do we have for Losip?
So there are potentially a lot of projects we can spend Losip funds on. In the absence of anything else, I would consider spending Losip funds for the HVAC upgrades for this building. But since the committee that's exploring the senior center is talking about potentially adding it to this building in some form or another, I think spending money on any kind of HVAC upgrades is...
Premature.
Premature. So the other project I can see us spending some of Losip funds, not necessarily a lot, would be renovations at the Veterans Memorial. That would be the other thing that would be a reasonable fit right here, right now for Losip. I would probably save the rest of it for our first culture job in a year or so.
So at the Veterans Memorial, you're just thinking about irrigation?
I thought that's a little bit of a decision.
So I think we need to look at all our options and I'm not saying we're ready, anywhere near ready for a Losip application. The only thing, the only reason I asked and put it on the agenda today was to know whether that was even an option that you as a board would consider if at some point we came back to you with a proposal for spending Losip funds for renovating that area.
Well, my question would be, we have to get the transfer station done. Where else are we gonna get the money?
Theoretically, you could peel it out of the road, out of the paving budget. That would be another option. But that would take, you know, that much money out of paving.
Does anybody here have a major problem using Losip funds for this?
It's just a block.
It is a little... Any recommendations as to how to reduce the cost?
No, I mean, you know, I have a couple ideas, but obviously Eric's concerned about those.
So Eric's concern is that the max that would cost is 65,000. If you pass a motion to get 65,000 out of Losip, you give Eric, find a better way to do it, it costs less than 65,000.
We have a problem as we're working these in terms of insurance as well, too. We gotta get it done. That's all, it's been closed down to November, the place got scheduled. Yeah, we're late in the game if we ask for further options.
Well, worst case scenario, you could put that off for a sprint. It would be in the mountains. I wouldn't peel the asphalt with air up now if I was gonna wait to pave. But if you had to wait to pave, you know, you could wait to pave and pave it next.
I will say, one of my concerns about paving right now is, you know, I wasn't there, so I'm asking this, not criticizing. How well was that back wall, with the backfill against the wall compact? Because if we pave right now, how much stuff would we get out of it? I mean, that's definitely a concern. I also had another thought. Looking at that, whether or not we should be pouring concrete slabs over the top of those blocks to take up some of the other issues that we talked about as far as being able to anchor to areas and things like that. Would it make sense to look at slapping that? Because otherwise, we're talking about, you know, the cover blocks are a problem. I know we put them in, but I don't know if they're the best solution for it. You know? We're gonna have a problem anchoring, so that's gonna make some difficult calipster. It might have been better to actually do a concrete slab over the top, come in a little bit, you know? Any thoughts on that? Makes sense this is out there.
I mean... You know, there's always, part of what I was trying to do rightly is, you know, stay somewhat within the budget that we had allocated.
I'm not criticizing those stuff.
Right.
If you think that that would be a viable solution to address some of the issues that we're gonna have, otherwise, we're putting a correct...
I mean, I think I worked with Public Works to come up with a solution for the rain that they're happy with and I'm happy with.
So we have a solution right now?
So we have a solution. We are going to have to pour on the side with the compactors. We are going to have to pour some small pads to bolt to, you know, where it dips down.
So we're thinking about the same thing at some point. I guess I was just thinking about bigger paths that maybe would be more cumbersome, you know, in that one else machine. I'm just really worried about compaction. I didn't see the backfill happening, whether or not they were walking, you know, whether or not they were really that compacting really well. Because settling against a wall, the drainage is always an issue. And we haven't had that up very long. We haven't had a lot of rain this summer, so. I don't know. I don't have a problem with Losip funds. You know, if we wanna prove that and then try to look at what our options are as to the correct way to do it.
I think that's a pretty good idea. Anybody wanna make that motion?
I'll make a motion. Let's make a motion that we take your Losip funds to a maximum of 65,000 to repay, regrade, improve drainage of the transfer station to be completed within the next year.
I'll start with that. Good discussion. Follows prepare.
Aye.
Eric, did you want to discuss anything about the Losip funding for Veterans Memorial?
Not other than what I've already said, maybe Scott wants to... Scott and I have been walking that and looking at that. I can tell you the things that I think we need to get done. One, I think we need to upgrade the, you know, the main service panel that's there. That's kind of problematic and I'd ask for it to give me an estimate for what it would cost to do that. The second thing is when they originally put in the pressure tank down there, they put it in closure that's about this wide in something that's about six feet deep. And they basically have to lower somebody headfirst down there every time you drain the thing and work it. So I think one of the things we gotta do as part of that project is put a problem handle in there for that. And Public Works can do that, you know, we would just have to take it up and do it. Beyond that, I think we're looking probably at an irrigation system of some sort. Scott and I are gonna go down there and basically run the hell out of the water from the existing well pump and make sure that well pump can sustain a good flow rate for a reasonable amount of time in what's now very low flow conditions. Because I don't think any of us really know, you know, how deep that well is and what's actually in there. And as long as the well will support it, you know, if we have the electrical system in reasonable shape, we're looking at putting in a irrigation system and then putting back in a reasonable amount of topsoil. Because one of the problems that place has had is they never really, they never really put topsoil down in a reasonable quantity when they did the monument rehearsals.
So has anyone talked to, like, John Foreman? I know they had a whole plan for this.
Yeah, we could.
Okay. What does she say? I thought they had somebody that was gonna donate the irrigation or something.
Yeah, I checked, the whole guy who did the package never got back. I don't doubt him.
Yeah, and I'm not saying we should, I'm not, I'm not asking for motion to set aside Losip funds. All I'm asking is if we did our homework and we came back to some point with the plan, is that something the board even wants to finally?
What about this?
I didn't touch it.
Put it on here.
That's been unsolicited. So just a quick question, the manual that you guys put in with all the sprinkler controls and everything, you did locate it in there?
That's a good question.
Yeah. I mean, all that stuff would have to be in a kind of enclosed space, so if we put like, like, it's probably a box manual or something down there, like something that we could...
I mean, I was thinking more just for the pressure tank and the controls and that.
Say something like a property box with manual cover with the controls in it?
Yeah, but it would make sense to, you know... Yeah, whatever we're gonna put in for a sprinkler system, then we have some. Although I would think you probably would have the control for that up ground because I don't like, know if anybody's gonna be wanting to climb down the hole every time they turn the thing off or turn it off for...
That would be on the back.
Now, the pressure tank's gonna have to be drained in the water. Right?
Yes.
It's not hiding there compared if it's in a...
So here's another question before anybody gets all excited about putting sprinkler down there. Has anybody got any information on the well?
He just...
Well, in the answer is no. I mean, that's one of the things Scott and I would wanna do is go down and run the hell out of the well. Run it flat.
That doesn't tell you anything. You may do that one time. You need a half, a half an inch of water per square foot of water, you know, available to you. And that doesn't sound like much, but if you wanna keep grass green, that's a lot of water. You've given the location of that well, I'm guessing it's not...
We're gonna talk about irrigation in here and find out exactly how much water that they need and then we'll see if that well will supply that.
You need somebody with a sounder. You guys are, whichever gets to fix the well?
We got M&amp;M.
Okay. What was wrong with the well at this time?
Oh, just the little contractor was stuck.
So where did the person?
Yeah.
Does M&amp;M, maybe not that... I think it may be here. Maybe contact M&amp;M and see if they have a sounder. They'll tell you how deep the well is, what's the charred rate is. So if you know the initial, if you know the initial depth of the well, it'll tell you how much water it's holding in at any given time.
The well is from a drainage here, how long when you put the...
Oh my God.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
Before we get out of this stuff, yeah, Memorial needs to be taken care of. I don't care what we do. I mean, I don't wanna spend my money. I don't care if it's...
I guess, I guess, and this is sort of my concern. And I assume we wanna get to it, but here's my concern. Everyone has good intentions. We start going down these paths and then we decide, oh, we put all this effort into it and we gotta finish it. Now we have to finish it. So you spend the money on, well, now it turns out we need a well, and now it turns out we need this, and now it turns out we need that.
Well, that's what we're gonna try to find out though, all those answers does, right?
There's a lot of questions.
Right.
I know it's a center of town, you know, it's an important piece of property town. But it's, you know, it's sort of, it's sort of our declaration right now. We don't want to have really good...
It's the bridge in the... Alright, everybody turn their eyes off.
It's Adrian's thing.
I turned it off.
Let's go.
Yeah.
It's Paul. Alright, let's turn our eyes on Paul. You?
Is that a legal filter you're running?
Okay, Paul is out. Alright. So we, I mean, listen, we have a lot of things to do and I know Scott, but if you want us to, Eric, we're two listed questions. I'm sure that we...
Yeah. We know that there's a lot of things involved with it, you know? You just start somewhere, so you have to start. Have we thought about trying to do some type of fundraiser or whatever for this project?
No, but we would. It's also on the agenda. Okay, anybody else? Alright, let's go to steep grant funding for roadwork.
So again, we, at the last meeting, we had, we knew that there was a steep grant, but we didn't have any other rules for the steep grant. So two things have changed. First is, this time around is the total cap of funding has gone down considerably. It's now about 130,000 dollars max, we're down actually 128,000. At the same time, they made it very clear they're looking for shovel-ready projects to fund, not speculative. And they're very clear that the scope of the project, you know, can't, whatever the original scope is, is what they're funding. So we couldn't do what we did before, which was fund the project and then kind of change pretty considerably what we were doing. So, so given those, that circumstance, I thought probably the most important thing we had that we could fund out of the steep would either be a roadwork project or a culvert project. But given where we are in the planning process for culverts, I thought it would be better to do a roadwork project. So my suggestion is we do what we were planning on doing anyway, which is Long Hill Road from Route 6 to the, just past the Bear Swamp intersection, and then Shawty Mill from Route 6 to the intersection of Wales to be coordinated with the drainage work that we need to do on Shawty Mill. And that would basically reconstruct those road sections.
And that would be covered by what, between 100% match-up and steep?
Right, so I have two, I put in your packet, cost estimates from that. We have numbers from two different contractors. Again, we put out an RFP, but we have pretty solid numbers. And that would, both, doing both of those would be around 265,000. So, which actually, you know, for reconstructing a mile of road isn't bad.
That's okay.
It's a pretty good number. So that would be my suggestion for what we go after for a steep grant. But I don't wanna start writing a steep grant until I'm absolutely sure that aligns with what you as a board want to apply for.
Anybody have any other ideas? Because as far as I'm concerned, I would do the roadwork.
Yeah, I mean, there's other ideas that are bothering roadwork enough along, you know, traffic committee has some ideas for, you know, things, but...
Are those matching? We have the match up to 100%.
We do, yes.
But also, you have to figure out how Eric has to write this, so it's a, what is it, small town economic activity...
Assistance.
Assistance program, so.
Right.
You have to write it around some type of economic benefit to the community, so.
That's what I would...
I believe that what you're talking about, Long Hill and Shawty, that makes sense.
Are you talking about test, like, you're talking about the one you're talking about, like, test and tell, heal tell the farm?
No.
That section's bad.
Yeah.
Really, really bad.
I mean, the whole road is...
I mean, the sections of the farms are probably done on one side about eight inches, it's a rotten wall all the way down there.
Yeah.
And if we're gonna do it, I would like to try to support getting that one section up. I mean, what if we talk about that a lot more?
No, to get past your, you'd have to go pretty much to where the first roof is in the April subdivision. And that's an extra, probably more than 30,000 or 40,000. So that's gonna add probably at least 8,000 of the cost of that if you want to extend it to that part. That's just off the top of my head, guess.
Because that's one of the worst sections that are gonna, I think, in my personal opinion. Just like on the roads around here, it's one of the worst ones.
Well, don't write your bike on it.
Well, I have to, I have no choice.
So is it?
Go the other way.
Well, it's not, it's not...
Isn't that an option with the roadwork funding that's like, I mean, listen, I, not that I can speak to Jeff saying it's the worst section of town. I would love to see one of those feeder roads completely done.
Yeah, but the problem is we really do need to work on sodding it and anything. And that's given the transfer station in there.
No, no, I'm not talking about how we raise the steep grant and steep grant funding. I'm saying, I'm saying take extra roadwork money and finish Long Hill.
Let's say I ran up a crew there, why don't we just do that extra bit, just do a thought?
We have, I believe, 230,000 dollars still remaining in the road.
Can we do additional?
You have a plan, so.
Can we do additional work with a steep grant on something like that?
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly, if we had the extra money to do it, we could simply tell the contractor to keep rolling up the road, totally ride on the money.
And we won't get any answer on this until next year anyways, right?
No.
Uh, no, for the steep grant, we will know, supposedly, we will know by September 14th that we'll make a final decision on the funding.
You won't be able to pay, you won't be able to do that, that shit.
Yeah.
Because we can budget it, we can budget it, we can do next year, we can do it.
I guess that's what I'm thinking, is depending upon where we're at in the budget or whatever.
I'm just saying, we should just keep our mind very big on all sections. Well, if you're not, I can fix it.
And we have a certain amount of money in our budget to start shooting. We have a certain amount of money for paving, we could throw with that. It was on the list, right?
Yeah, yeah.
It's not like we're going outside ourselves.
True.
No, I don't, I don't disagree, I would...
The road's coming up. So does anyone have any issues with the steep grant being applied for using those two roads as bases?
No, I think it's good. I make a motion that we...
You ever gonna watch kids like me motions?
I read the, I read the...
Okay.
Do I have to use your motion?
I'm right.
I feel physical by that.
Here, I'll read it. I was gonna be, a motion to authorize the town district to submit steep grant for reclaiming and paving Long Hill Road from Route 6 to Bear Swamp and Shawty Mill from Route 6 to Wales. Want a second?
Sure, second.
Okay.
Just one question.
Discussion.
Yeah, discussion. One question is the connectivity director you had.
Yep.
You said we understand that still?
There... We are still slightly under spec, but not a lot.
Is that a good roadwork on Long Hill?
No, we can't use that for roadwork.
Okay.
Just asking the question, first thing, man, yeah.
Right, just asking the question.
Yeah, no, it's perfectly good.
How about extra dirt for the memorial? I'll just say, can I, I'd like the amendment motion that we, that the town also strongly considers through to completing the paving on Long Hill. So where do you need to get suggested?
You can say a shovel. Here, is that acceptable?
Uh, yeah.
So it's on the right? That's the point.
A shovel.
Right. Now we know we can say it wasn't this house.
It would be that sharp, you called that...
It would be that sharp, you could go with that sharp corner to the right and go back to the sources.
Yeah, so this is not including, this is presuming we get the steep and we do what we talked about doing in the steep grant. That's what the three-year plan looks like. For a budget of roughly three hundred thousand dollars a year, able to use roughly a hundred thousand of town-made road for actual pays. That's what a plan looks like, the one you would look at accomplishing.
Good. Alright, so what do we need, what work do we need to get to, Eric?
What?
What work do you need to get to up there?
Uh, basically you would be doing, um, Long Hill to around Shadwell.
So we need to finish out of Shadwell to take up the area that you had concerned about?
Well, that area, yes, yes.
So I would amend it that, I just wanted to amend the motion that we draw that if the, if the grant approves that the town can use all available resources to try to complete, um, the paving on Long Hill, we get to about Shadwell.
Okay, I'll second that. Any further discussion? Paul is a fair. Alright. Alright, let's, uh, go to the usage of the athletic field.
Okay, again, you had in your packet, uh, the facility refresh form agreement from Kyle. I did, I was not able to speak to Richard Clarko. I called him again today, it was not getting any response.
He won't make it back though, come on.
I did talk to Kyle, um, and Kyle basically said that lining the field is about fifty bucks in material per time he lines it. And he lines it basically wants to be reported to him. So that's what he figures his sum costs are doing the lining of, of basically the three, you know, playing fields.
So when Rich Clarko gets back to us, we'll release that way tangible answer as to, you know? And then we can decide what we need to do at our next meeting. Because the way that, the way that Kyle wrote it was ten thousand dollars or five thousand dollars, a few lines of field. I can't tell you, I know exactly what it costs to line that field, but... Do you have any information, Scott, related to that, talking everywhere?
Uh, but it seems, uh, that, you know, you wrote that down, I got the same thing. Five and ten.
How many bases is worth?
Oh, you probably have a cycle from April to the end of June or let's say March, probably. It's not like March, March, April, May, June. So four months there, you take off July and August and then you get back down to September and October and November. So seven months. So twenty-eight weeks.
Till seventeen, fifteen, it's early.
Right.
Plus whatever he gets for later.
I'm not saying it's reasonable or not reasonable, I'm just saying that that's what we proposed. And the question becomes, do you wanna wait until you get results back from Richard Clarko? May I find a decision? Because we had, at the last board select one meeting, you guys had specifically said couldn't use the field after August first unless we had an agreement. We don't have an agreement this year, so that either needs to be modified or we need to just tell them what, you know, we're going to charge them.
Rich said he wanted to be involved with the painting, I think he wanted that.
Yep.
Where does this fit into the whole Boeing situation though?
Clarko's already involved.
He's already involved.
Yeah, we, so what we did this year is...
Hebrin is part of it. So the question is, do we use Hebrin parts and Ram on the line fields? To me, it's just to, to get a cost, negotiate out and find another...
You know...
I mean, we don't have a cost. I mean, we can sit there and say, go back and get this, but to me, it's Eric, find out the number from this Clarko, it's a changeable number back to, to Kyle, let's say, God, this is what we need to do. If Kyle does not agree to it at that point in time, then we, we eliminate usage of field. It's not, that area. I mean, I would like to see Kyle use it, just to show, you know, show his activity, but you don't want him to use the field at any discounted, any specifically discounted cost.
I mean, he's faced, he's charged us a lot of bucks in back. And I take for the lining, but it's fifty dollars in terms of...
Yeah, it's not. I mean, I, I can't tell you how long it takes to line it. Once he does the first line, it's locked. So we just go back open, so trace it.
Yeah.
Takes him like, I think, an hour and a half or something. So anyway, that's...
A steep grant, you can buy a robot that'll do that every week.
There we go. So Rich, I know, I thought, I understood that Rich, that Hebrin charges, Hebrin parts are gonna charge us the Ram school board a fifty-dollar field, line of field. So the question is, does he do it twenty-eight times?
Yeah.
That's fourteen dollars.
I, I estimated thirty-five. I just did five, five weeks, just for a reason.
But the other thing too to keep in mind is that that's not one field. That's one big field, but there's three full lineouts on that field.
Correct. There's a small field, then several large fields, then there's an outside field.
Yeah, but this is soccer. I mean, I mean, you'd like to have soccer, outside, center, circle, couple, circle.
Couple, circle. It's easy. Just ask Rich about it, let's get from Hebrin's part, correct, what's the number, is it? Let's all just get together. Does anyone have a problem with Kyle using the field until our next meeting?
Until our next meeting?
Yeah. August tenth, thirteenth, whatever it is.
Same one there.
So we can be approving if he uses it now?
He's already.
I'm confused.
So at the last...
You get out of there.
So we agreed to let them use the field pending an arrangement in place by July first. Um, I yelled at them a little bit because he has no arrangement. He hadn't filled out a paperwork and gotten anything back. So now he has, but the question is simply the final cost that we as a town want to assess it for his use of the field. That's the, you know, I mean, the question is, do you want to decide? What is it, how, how do you want to proceed from here? I mean, I feel like, do I just give him the number and charge him? What is it that you want me to do? So that, that's where we're at right now. I'm just trying to understand, what is the cost there?
We need to, we have to pay it, most we got.
Ten thousand dollars.
Do you know why he's the one that signed this is done? Not the president?
No, I don't. He's the one I've been dealing with. I have not...
No, but the last time was signed by the president, right? Trump signed it.
So, so anyway, so anyway, from my standpoint, you, I, I see what you're calling me. Who's really responsible and we should make sure that it's done correctly. But, listen, if you wanna sit there and say that he does not use the field until we have agreement, I don't have a problem.
How many times a week does he need that?
I believe it's three.
At least, yeah. I mean, they're using the field pretty regularly. Other than over kids involved in the services department, I don't know.
No, it's still many of our kids. It's not, it's not, it's not a, a majority of many of the children, no.
We don't have that many kids, so I don't think we have a majority.
No, we can't.
It's a, it's a travel.
It's a pay-for-play. It's a nonprofit.
A nonprofit.
It's a nonprofit for...
Personally, I think, I, I'm good with anybody getting out to me, we can right now, so if the kids wanna go play, I'll go play. We'll sort it out on the town. That's my...
Anybody else, Jeff? Paul, you? Scott, are you okay? Because you're down there, you are the...
Yeah, we had to... You walk by, I think. Why, why? I don't play. I don't play. Scott says I don't play.
Alright, that's the point, but he has to, there has to be self-agreement that we can vote out at our next meeting for...
If there's nothing in place on the town, it's done.
Who's scheduled when he gets there? Does he interfere with what girls are... There's a couple times I want him to practice that he's with the fields.
Well, he, he sat down with his earlier, his process and, um, he does work with Ram to try to sit there and get passes. So there's usually one weekend a day for Ram, you, and he takes one weekend and then he has, he has three evenings, I believe, Eric, correct? With something like Tuesday, Thursday, Friday or something like that. And then Ram is gonna sit there and take the other days.
Yeah.
So Paul, if you want it, you coordinate with him, you get whatever you want.
No, I, I'm not coaching anymore, so that's it. I just wanna make sure that...
She quit coaching, but she couldn't get on the field.
No.
Girls are suffering for this.
Let's go. Alright. Uh, well, Scott, let's, let's also talk about softball fields since we talked about athletic field. Do you have any problems with softball field?
Oh, we just gotta get the trellion removed. So we do have a problem, we need to move trellion.
We need to get that brush, Jeff.
Can public works help with the, the container room? We talked that it would lift it. Can they do it at some point? When can you have them do it?
I mean, honestly, I don't know how you move a container. I mean, I guess...
We have forks.
Try to pick the thing up from the forklift.
No, we have the forks for it.
It's only, it's only five thousand pounds, could be, that, that loader is, you know, probably fifteen or twenty.
So where does it have to go?
Thirty feet.
You just drill it? If it doesn't need to be lifted, you drag it. If it does need to be lifted, you slide it out of the forks and take a ratchet strap, you go all the way around the thing and then back to the loader. And then you tip it back up.
Okay. So at some point in time, see if we would like that moved in. I had talked about chipping the brush.
You have a chipper, right?
Hold on, we're just gonna pay out to the brush pile and then we're gonna actually pay for the chipping and the power brush pile in about three, four weeks.
No, we'll get to that somewhere.
If, if, it would've been better, we could've chipped that brush into where that chair was going. We could've chipped it into there now.
Why, why can't we drag the brush out into a pile before you're part of practicing? What other towns do with that small pile?
If you would like to make that recommendation.
Same, it's great practice, brush, brush pile.
Where is it right now? I'm sure the seniors...
Oh, yeah, they will, quite good. No, I mean, I'm betting if we get back to the transfer station, why can't the... Instead of writing, you said you were writing something?
Because, because the fire department at one point in time ran out their pumper, burning the brush pile. They said they had a fire. So the fire department has banned burning that pile and using their...
Yeah, but they got a four thousand dollar chart now, they got plenty more.
So what's the, do you know what? Eric, I don't care how we get rid of that brush pile, let's just get rid of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's on the list to get.
Okay.
And just don't burn it.
We could burn it, you could.
No, you can't say to him, don't, he don't care.
Do you care? We could have a, um, fire and we could all do shmores and agents would donate the marshmallows, I guarantee it.
I'll donate the marshmallows and the sticks.
There you go. Okay, anything else on this? And Scott, and since you are really, you know, you do have the most invested in this field, and you tell us, anything you need done, what you need, anything that's problematic out there?
After the container gets moved, we need that small, while they're down there, they can boot the small shed up on high ground.
So we have a shed up on the pile and a container. Anything else before Jeff decides not to?
I want you to turn around, Dave, so I can hear you.
I said you got a trellion, you got the brush pile, and you got the container. Is there anything else before Jeff moves on?
No, that's it.
Okay. Alright, we're good. Public speak. Elaine?
I'm good.
Carolene? You're good, alright. Someone wanna make, make a motion to go and take a session? Someone, I'll make a motion to go and take a session at, um, seven forty at the time on Monday until like twenty-seven to discuss the assistant town clerk position with Carolene.
I'll submit.
Paul is a fair. Alright.